He's on the clock.
Hey, so just a quick comment maybe about the mat and what how you perceive kind of maybe the future in what.
Um, when it comes to wrestling programs, more mats are always better because you can have bigger events, which is very evident. My experience in wrestling is pretty extensive and not having tape, having tough down Velcro are huge benefits because they're easy to, they're easy to pick up, they're easy to move, and they're easy to store because they're smaller than not a big a chunk that you've been dealing with. Look at this, you hang it from ceiling or whatever. Knowing the product and knowing the company behind it, I definitely, I definitely recommend that.
Okay, thank you. Hey, any other questions? Comments? Okay, all in favor for purchasing the mats for Matt, $12,894 out of the operations funds? Say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Opposed? All right.
Luke, thank you for your efforts and work on all this. I know you did a lot of labor to try and make this happen and all the coaches for jumping in there, putting that support. This is, uh, excited. Appreciate you guys doing all that.
Thank you guys for being along for the mention of the sport, so.
Adoption of student handbook revision. Day through five, DCMS and DCHS addition, we have the DCHS athletic handbook, and it should be reviewed and revised for us with the Neola transfer policy. We've done that. This patient and DCAs, my student. So what we're looking at is the handbooks for the elementary, middle school, and the high school. Need a motion?
Uh, Mr. President, I have motion to adopt the student handbook revisions.
Thank you. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Comments? Anybody? Anybody, or administrative, have any comments on them or anything? Aligning them? Okay. All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Thank you. Uh, H, terms agreements of the Daktronics for the scoreboard purchase.
I don't know if I have enough of these. I didn't expect such an extensive gathering tonight, so, I don't know if you want extra copies.
I only got one anyway.
If, if, while I'm waiting for those extra copies, let me do a little clarification. All, what you are, what you're voting on tonight is to sign off on an agreement which will allow Daktronics to put together a contract proposal for us. We are agreeing to the terms that are, that are in this sheet that they sent us, and, and if I can review it, it's, it's for equipment and installation of four scoreboards for the, for the main gym, for, also then for the football field, for the baseball field, and for the softball field. And it comes to a total of $428,000. It is over seven years, and that would result in an annual payment of $61,143.
And then, zero percent interest.
At zero percent interest. Now, if you, for whatever reason, they chose to kind of move, move some things around, but if you look at the spreadsheet that I am providing for you, I think what has happened is in part of their equipment cost, they have included steel for the installation of the scoreboard and some other structural items. And so, the one-page agreement shows equipment of $338,000, which is about $15,000 more than what their individual breakdown shows, which is, and instead, they included that in the installation cost. The amount is the same, it's $428,000, but it shows you, the basketball is $178,000, football's $165,000, baseball is $55,000, and softball is $30,000. Mr. Sims has shown what kind of donations he has secured at this time, and he's got four anchor pledges, and these are all for five years, they're $6,000 apiece. He has one founding pledge at $3,000, and one premier pledge at $2800. So that's an annual amount of $28,000 toward the $61,000. Now, he also has secured a one-time donation of $10,000 that I assume will use for the first year's payment, and, and so, that, that brings, brings that total to $38,000, which you can see leaves about $23,000 that we would need, need to raise to pay the first year's base. But I'm sure with the brand new athletic director that we have hired, he's going to find a lot of creative ways to go out and, and secure more pledges to take care of this need. But this is where it stands right now, if you want to consider it.
I'm making a motion that we enter into the agreement for Daktronics for the scoreboard package and in the seven-year proposal at zero, zero percent interest rate. The cost of, total cost $128,000, annual payment $61,123 to be covered by these sponsors raised by the athletic partner.
I'll second it.
I'd like to just verify one thing here. Mr. Rock, you said that we, or the agreement was to, it wasn't exactly the years or terms as it was looking into something?
No, they are going to prepare an actual contract, and then you will, as a final pro step in this, you will need to approve that contract. But this agreement is necessary for them to prepare a contract.
It's just agreement to go forward to look at a contract to be committed, so they can officially give us an official contract.
They are having a little bit of difficulty understanding school finance and, and the fact that we don't have a profit and lawsuit, so, so we're trying to work, I think we've worked through that with them.
So it's to allow them to present to us an official contract?
Yes. But you will have to approve it by law before it becomes final.
Okay. Everybody understand what's going on? So it's permission to present us with a contract based off these terms right here, and then at a probably next board meeting, we will be able to live on it that way. Okay? All right.
I have a question.
Sure.
Um, I know we talked about the baseball sign being moved. Is that installation cost actually moving it to center field? It is. Uh, and then the softball coaches mentioned that they haven't had any, they talked to them, but they wanted that sign moved towards center. They're not sure why it ended up works that currently.
That's fine. That's fine too. And what, what's happened is we were able to squeeze the numbers on the equipment because steel costs it to the run, but we know we've got to have all new structures with all new steel outside. And we moving both those down this year.
Okay, thank you again. And how, um, what is the timeframe for getting these installed?
Well, as each week goes by and each month goes by, it kicks it back right now, two, three, four weeks. So now, now you're getting to having everything done, you know, if things get approved, if this gets approved tonight, and then it goes to the board, and you vote it through the next month, you're talking football end of October, basketball, and all the other ones all done by about the first of November. We'll just kind of, you know, we'll make sure we're, we're going to be good for basketball. Football will be in place in case you want to do a, in the spring, you want to do a family night, movie night with Apple TV or whatever, or a graduation, I mean, that will be in play.
So football won't be for the 2021?
It keeps pushing it back. I mean, as, as each month goes back, that pushes it back too through the weeks.
Half, half of it. We're saying in October.
We, we could, we could, if you had two home games in October, and we move forward on the next meeting, then there's a good chance we could get those two games in October. I'll try to escalate that for you.
Any questions? Okay, all in favor for moving forward on the project of the scoreboards as presented? Say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Okay. Okay, interacting panels?
Can I make a comment on that? Excuse me, I don't know, athletic director. I would like to see these, all of our slots for sponsors filled by next meeting if possible.
I'm just, I was assisting.
I'd like to see as many of these sponsorship slots filled to where it becomes a true cost-neutral project for the school corporation, which is very beneficial to us.
Yep. Uh, interactive panels for new classrooms and replace broken smart boards, um, for UseSonic, $15,625. Do you want to explain that one? Okay, Mr. IT?
Yep, I expect us to be honest with that. I had to run against, you probably only have one quote in your, or two quotes, but I have a third quote here. Um, but, yeah, these are interactive panels. This is the exact same thing that when you guys used the middle school, it's that, it's exact same, but it's just on, it's coming out of the cart, and it sits the, this large 75-inch screen. Basically, we're getting to the point now where a lot of our, the smart boards we have, I think, are okay. The projectors are all starting to go bad. Been a lot of, um, last two or three months, I've got a lot of bulbs go bad, and I swapped out bulbs only to find, to fix the problem, it's just the actual projectors are starting to go. So, um, so we have, so we have one smart board or one projector going bad that we're going to, um, replace, and then we have a couple extra classrooms again we're adding, and that's what these, a couple of these will go into. I think two are going to go to Camden, one's going to go to the elementary. Mrs. Kramer has asked for one as well in the middle of school. High school already has one, high school, they use it quite a bit, um, in the middle school. She's asking for it. That way, we don't have to move the one back and forth every time you guys have a board meeting, plus she could use that whenever, having classes in there with her, I mean, she could, she could use it as well. But I think there's five of them on, on the, for requesting on, yeah. So, um, one of the ones for, what the board that actually Mrs. Miller had at the high school, her was on, actually on the lift, her smart board currently is on the lift, that actually drops down to six inches off the ground. So the game plan for one of the ones at Camden will put that board on that lift. That way, the board will drop, actually load up the ground, the kids can load up, and actually use, utilize it as well. So, because of lift, she asked, it's a pretty heavy-duty, nice, it's like a transporter.
The teachers.
Yeah.
They love that for the teachers.
Unless they have that.
All right, so, uh, we need a, a motion for five, people purchasing five of the panels from UseSonic again for $15,625 total.
Don't move.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Okay, have motion second? Question? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Okay. Uh, approval of bids to be paid from the 2019 bond. Uh, we have the fire alarm loop, as we had talked in our work session, Brand Electric for $24,849.38. Also, a tenant bid for repair and reselling the high school, middle school parking lot, PrimeSeal LLC for $16,501.10. Crenshaw's for $26,588. Okay, I guess that's all on that, right?
Right.
Okay, need motion?
I'm hoping that we approve the bids from J, A, and B to be approved as a move.
From the, should I say, from the 2019 bond fund?
Okay, oh yes. And to be paid from the 2019 bond fund.
Second.
Okay. Motion second, any discussion?
Mr. President?
Yes.
Uh, I, while we were sitting here, still have a question about the wireless wiring systems.
Yes.
Mall Hopps and Lockit is selling them now, and they have, have installed, already installed at least one of these. They're UL listed, they approved, um, you might know for sure about school corporations, of course, it would be different. So I wonder if, uh...
I texted my son, he was attacked, and he said you can't use them in commercial.
This would be a commercial building that's used in already, the one that they mentioned.
Yeah.
So I just wonder if it's worthy of confirming with Mall Hopps what, what might be available that people would commit to that number. This might be more money, I have no idea.
That's what we have.
Just sharing a little bit of information.
That's what we have at Camden.
Wireless, is that?
They confirmed it was wireless.
Oh, okay.
Uh, yeah, I, I still think we need to check some codes and make sure, even though they'll put it in, um, if, if it doesn't meet the codes, I think we put some risk on the school.
Uh, you remember what the cost was? What was the cost at Camden, do you remember that, Ross? Yeah, that's okay. I mean, that's a whole different ballgame compared to the building, but I agree, so I, I think we need to make sure we know what we're doing. But I just thought I would offer that because that's something before it's been, the first of many $24,000 bills, we might want to confirm what we want available for us.
Yeah, I mean, the state may approve it, but if NFPA doesn't, I think that we're, we've got some risk there, something active. Did you not have a conversation about the wireless with them? With, with Brand, or no?
No, I hadn't. That was with Brennico.
Okay.
It was just impossible to rewire Camden for, have the same battery.
But I meant for, for, for the middle school, high school.
No, we didn't discuss that because you already had everything in place, and we've redone that one already.
So that, Ross, that's a great point. Are we actually done with a big part of that rewiring?
Will this finish it?
This won't finish, no.
No, there's like 14 loops.
Yeah, I think we have 13 left.
Out of 10, we've already done that many?
Yeah, most of the middle school, I think all of the middle school is complete.
I apologize.
Well, that's all right.
Is there a question about compatibility?
Yeah, that I don't know, I'd have, I can give people, call them off.
Jumping from one company to another?
No, we made sure when we did this, there was no contractual agreement, there was no contract with any one company. We, we used a system that was compatible with anybody.
Okay.
We didn't want to get locked into a Seaman's contract stuff.
Yeah. Most of this is just wire return?
Yes, it works, yeah. And, you know, in all fairness, they, they thought the old wires were doing, we're just having too much interference because they're, they're living older.
So, so we've already replaced the, the Brennico side of it, and we're having problems because of old wiring, is that correct?
Yeah, Brennico, one, due to time restraint, when we finally approved it that year, um, and Brand got together, they felt the wiring would be okay, so we replaced the units, and the wiring was getting too much interference from other things.
So we have newer units, and we need new wire. So going to wireless would probably be more expensive than a long range.
Most likely. I would have to check before I spoke at a tournament, I don't think the wire system would convert to wireless, but I don't know.
I have a question on the, uh, work on the parking lots. Are we approving this PrimeSeal and not Crenshaw, or?
Right.
We had Crenshaw do the...
Yeah, they do a great job, but this, this company here in Delphi.
Yeah, who is this?
I'd have to look here. But we checked out all their products, and what they're using is exactly what we, we use and what we need. Yeah, I look, Brian does a great job, $10,000.
Who comes with the warranty and all that, so?
Yeah. I never even going to pay the charge.
Are the, is there any grinding involved in any, doing any of this, or?
I would have to ask him, but I assume they might have to out here where the old part of it, or?
Yeah, this one right.
That always comes back.
There's a dandy right down here in the middle, too.
And that's...
When did that appear?
Mother nature. We've got the Rona.
Okay, okay, so the motion is for...
May I clarify?
Sure.
On that, on that parking lot bid, we are, I'm asking you to tentatively approve that as the best bid. We may not be able to execute it immediately if you approve it, only because we don't know the cost for the bridge repair, which, which has to be done for safety sur, purposes. And, and so, but I would, I would like to be on record as accepting that bid, so that if, if we find out we can move forward, we can get that project done, so. Now, if you want to table the fire alarm bid, and let us look into, get you some answers on wireless, we'll be glad to do that and bring that back to you for the, for the June meeting.
Now, just know this is the line that's out of service. This, this line is completely off.
You're talking about one of the fire alarm ones?
What's the ECA that they're repairing at?
I can check for days, but they usually been pretty good about getting really good things fixed.
Does that mean days or weeks?
I would say probably weeks this time of year. We might still be on days. So far, we've been pretty lucky, we're just starting to get to summer. I can't run right now and find out, you guys, we, we...
Well, I, I think then is the question, do we approve it tentatively the same way so that you can move forward with that if, if the wireless option is really not feasible to run back to the board?
Yeah, it's very acceptable.
Yeah.
I think one thing we need to think about, if we are talking about wireless versus hard wire, is what's going to happen when they get up above and start running wire, and what else are we going to, other kind of expenses are we going to incur when they're pulling wire above the, it's all going to be above the ceiling, right?
Right, but this is, uh, much higher quality wire, and we haven't had any trouble with the last...
But I'm just saying, there's going to be a possibility of something else getting...
I guess there's always that possibility.
Yeah, but there, no possibility with wireless, though, right?
It's on who's doing.
Just saying.
I don't know.
We can table the whole thing and fill in the...
I, I, who made the original motion?
I did.
Would you accept the modification to, to read that we move forward with the tentative approval on both A and B pending the findings of the wireless and as requested on being for the, the bridge?
Okay. Um, I will amend my motion that we, we approve based on findings from the potential for wireless, and also, uh, pending, um, the bridge, uh, the bridge repair.
Zach, do you want to?
I'll second that again.
Okay, we have a new motion, the other motion died, and so, uh, any discussion now on the new motion?
Yeah. Are we throwing in the bridge repair in this?
No. No, it, it's, part of this is contingent on the bridge repair. It, it could kick out some of this. There's nothing I can do.
And PrimeSeal is going to put a bid in on that?
No.
No, no, no.
Benedict Concrete is getting us a bid for...
Who is it?
Benedict Concrete. Ross begged them to give us a bid, and they didn't.
Yeah, I mean, David, nobody else will touch it.
Can I ask one question about that?
Sure.
Are we talking about on those loops, are we going to go wireless everything, even the ones that were already in place?
I, I think really the, the answer to that is we just need to know what is an option at this point, what those costs are, because I, I doubt that, but perhaps it is...
I have a feeling they won't interchange, I have a feeling we have to replace the larger. As Scott said, we would have to have more access.
Yeah, you need a new board that would accept the wireless signal.
I have a feeling I will get quite a lot, much more than this, but I do not know.
Any other discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Okay. Okay, approval for granting contract for fire alarm inspections as required by law, and they are recommending envelope facility technology, three years? So in year one, it'd be 97.68, year two will be 10,061, and year three is 10,663 is the way I understand that, right, Ross?
It just says it's envelop.
Envelop?
Yeah.
Um, and, da-da-da, uh, then there was another one from Fairfield Communications for one year for 96.95, and Brennico for one year for 13,165. Uh, so, need a motion to approve the recommendation of the one for a three-year.
Just for clarification, are we looking at three different things? Those are just showing our three choices?
Three choices, your bids, the highlighted one there, the first one.
I motion that we accept the fire protection inspections from envelope facility technologies for three years, uh, in the amounts of 97.68, 10,061, and 10,663.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion is second. Any other questions?
This is inspection only, right?
And fire extinguisher. Three, no, or replacement, fifteen.
That includes?
And the loads and everything.
Okay. And pressure testing?
Everything.
Okay.
The other two companies didn't want to go out on a three-year contract?
Uh, the problem is that Brennico's just been growing in expenses, seems like every time they come over, it's another charge, and when Greg read through the Fairchild agreement, there were a lot of extras as far as if they hadn't come out any other time. It, it was more reminiscent of Seaman's contracts, where it seems like a good idea at the time.
Any other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? All right. Before we get to the school board information, um, the other thing you might would like to bring to the table? Okay, if not, Mr. Rock? Okay, if not, Mr. Ross, from the school board information?
Uh, we've got, uh, the elementary second grade to Riley Park for their end of year picnic. Uh, we have a request for an internal transfer, Carol Johnson, uh, from guided study instruction and credit recovery to, uh, time as an, uh, English language or English class interventionist. Uh, Ben Gleason will move from, uh, part of his day as Ben was special ed, uh, uh, in the instructional room and he will be, uh, full-time in, in, uh, credit, uh, recovery in the Apex program. And, uh, Mr. Reddick, who will move from being a middle school principal to middle school project lead the way teacher. Finally, or C is Jamie Robinette, summer enrichment camp, and this is a part of a high ability grant for grades four and five. And finally, uh, the high school French club, May twenty-seventh to the Melvin Five Indy for end of year celebration.
Thank you. So future dates, agenda items, May twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-one, the girls softball sectionals begin. May twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-one is the senior trip to the Indianapolis Zoo. May twenty-sixth is the baseball sectionals begin, actually all here. Uh, May twenty-eighth, the scholarship night, uh, starts at seven PM. May twenty-ninth, ten AM graduation. Uh, Mr. Circle, can you tell us what time you would like the board there?
At nine thirty, so you can get your.
What was that, nine fifty-five?
Nine, nine ten for you Gil, we do that. The notice will be gone if you get there. Okay. Uh, June, June fourteenth, seven, uh, seven PM is the regular board meeting and we will be having a work session at five PM, uh, prior to that. Uh, June fourteenth through the seventeenth, uh, is the FFA State Convention. Um, also, uh, we will, so everybody knows, our July twelfth regular board meeting will be moved to July nineteenth. Hopefully by then we will be allowed to remove that. So, more comments? Mr. Nipple?
Well, I've got a question, we talked a little bit about, uh, Friday morning, is there awards?
Oh, yes. Is there awards for the staff?
Uh, yes, Friday morning there's awards for the staff. There's gonna be donuts, Mr. Ross, good, great.
Eight AM, right?
I know.
Eight AM?
Eight AM, it'll be a little late. Um, eight AM and then we're getting the awards, eight fifteen and a little over.
Are they gonna be full-size donuts?
I don't know, Mr. Ross.
I had a complaint about the size of the donuts, one of the bus drivers, he was not happy with his.
I can imagine who it was.
Can I have some, uh, specs please?
How big do they have to be?
Well, my, my bus driver in the area, he said it wasn't very big.
Well, check the box in the, in the lounge, Mr. Nipple, and see if those meet your standards.
Well, he didn't like my comment, so.
Okay.
Those aren't big enough?
No, those are, those are about average, I guess.
Eight thirty, perfect for the high school, grade.
High school? High school, uh.
In the gym age now.
In the gym age now. Mr. Schidler, do you have any graduations or anything that we just need to know about?
Thursday at eleven o'clock, we're doing our fifth grade awards.
Fifth grade at eleven?
Eleven o'clock, Thursday. Bring them to gym.
Thank you. Do we have anything at, uh?
Yes. Tomorrow at one o'clock.
Tomorrow at one o'clock. And that's restricted though, right?
Yes, due to the size of our gym and capacity. And parents have been very understanding.
Okay, anything at the middle school?
Yeah, on Thursday we have an eight-thirty six grade awards, nine-thirty seven grade, and ten-thirty the eighth grade.
Okay. That was Thursday?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
It was eight-thirty, nine-thirty, and ten-thirty?
Okay.
I couldn't hear what you said. I think it was about the donut.
Chase the blind donut.
Oh, gotcha.
You might buy the donut though.
Yeah, we're not buying them. Yeah.
We are, at the high school, we are going to allow seniors to do a little parade within the high school on link after the award.
Okay. With that being said. Mr. Nipple, do you have, uh, any comments you'd like to say?
Uh. Glad to be back, good to see everybody and, uh, we've got one more day, so I'd like to congratulate Chip on being the new AD. And excited about that, I think, uh, the course program is, is changing and, uh, I think Chip's gonna help us out tremendously on that, so. Welcome aboard.
Zach?
Uh, I'll start out as well, welcome Chip. Uh, I think we're all, uh, excited to work with you and obviously the new possibilities with the school board if that happens to work through. Um, just want to kind of acknowledge some of the, the big things that are happening, I like seeing all the technology upgrades that we're getting. I know some of that's just a yearly thing, but it's really nice to see that we continue to add to the things that our kids, uh, get a chance to utilize, to learn. Um, obviously chances for big expenses for fire alarm loops, things like that, um, all things that need to be done though. Uh, we need to just keep a, keep a lookout for those and maybe catch some of those before they get to a, a big expense. Uh, some of the transfers and things like that with student or with teachers, uh, that's exciting for everybody. Uh, a lot of people look for new experiences and we hope to keep people happy within the organization rather than leaving it. Uh, and of course, we've got graduation and some, uh, several big sporting sectionals and things coming up, so hopefully everybody can stay healthy and let's get through this and, and let everybody finish what, what they started.
Gil?
Uh, well, uh, lots of activities tonight in the agenda, lots of discussion, I appreciate everybody's input. Uh, Chip, welcome back to Delphi, it's great having you back. Uh, uh, again, Luke and their wrestling coaches, uh, thanks for your working efforts on the mat and we do look forward to seeing the tournaments in Delphi and what that can do for our wrestling program. Uh, good luck to, uh, baseball, softball, is that it for sectionals, it is, isn't it?
We've got some track kids on the region.
We have track kids on the region?
Yeah, yeah, we have pole vaulters and javelins.
Oh, that's great, okay, good luck to them. Uh, and I, uh, want to thank everybody for a great school year, it's been rough, you guys have all done amazing work and we appreciate y'all a lot.
Mike?
Uh, it was good to see the room full of people here this morning. I'm glad to see that. I'm glad they're welcome, Mr. Dale, congratulations, I'm happy for you. Uh, I'm happy for our wrestling program and we got a new Matt Boyd in, maybe you could keep a little bit of your extra money. I'm glad we're able to afford finally to maybe spend a little bit of money on a school corporation on head grades and equipment. Uh, I'm really happy when we talked about the stipend, it just didn't include the teachers, it included everybody in the school corporation. Bus drivers, custodians, cooks, and, uh, maybe we feel happy that we all got to, uh, share in that. We'll meet again next time, uh, school will be over, so I'd like to wish everybody a safe, happy summer and thank you for all your hard work this year.
Four, five, six months ago when we started school, I don't know that anybody thought we'd make it through a whole year, we did. Uh, I want to thank all the people that made, helped make that happen, uh, from our leadership to, uh, parents, to students. Uh, it's a, it's a great thing that our community was able to go full-time this whole school year, uh, with only minor delays and hiccups along the line. Uh, Chip, welcome, look forward to, uh, some of the exciting ideas you're gonna bring into the athletic department. Uh, hopefully we can give you the scoreboards to kind of take that to the next level that we've discussed. And to all the graduates, seniors, um, be safe, have a safe graduation. Uh, all the graduation parties and celebrations, be safe and, uh, good luck in your future endeavors wherever they may lead you.
Yeah, I'm up next.
You're up next.
Okay, uh, welcome Chip, I think, uh, you'll, you'll be back home. Um, I want to echo Steve's thoughts on, um, on, uh, having a, a safe graduation. And I want to congratulate all of our seniors on their safe graduation, um, to be, and then, uh, I, I do think it is a big deal that we were in, uh, for class for the whole year or most of the year that, that we could be. Uh, I don't want to leave out, uh, that we really helped a lot of parents out. Because, uh, I, I talked to a lot of people that did not have school and, uh, it, it, it's really difficult in a work situation for a lot of people and it, it's helped out a lot of people. And, uh, all of our staff are the people that made that happen, so thank you.
Yeah, uh, man, uh, it, it's just very exciting that in my travels and people say, how'd you do it? I mean, we have made it through the school year, we did not hibernate, we didn't do anything except for what was right for the kids. Um, again, I mean, our administration was, was great on what they did, but you know what, our staff, our custodians that cleaned the extra at nights and stuff like that, we just appreciate it. It just shows you what kind of family Delphi truly is. And so for that, I, I want to say thank you very much that way. Um, Mr. Dale, um, look for, uh, great things to, uh, happen. Um, not necessarily a big deal about winning and losing or about the total revenue, but the character I think you'll bring to our organization. Um, uh, so welcome aboard and the job just now begins.
If, before you conclude, I'd, I'd like for Mr. Circle maybe to comment on a couple of our resignations.
Yeah, I want to say, uh, thank you to Mindy Cotton, who has worked really hard after retiring as a supervisor, um, to get, you know, build up the program once again in the high school and middle school choir program. And the musicals and the plays, if you've been to any of them, um, have been absolutely amazing and fabulous, so she will definitely be missed. And also Pete Bradle, who's been with us for, I don't even have a free name, long time, but he, he is legend for the guys of study, being on the heat control. And he is finally retiring, so thank him for all of his recent service.
And if I may, I'd like to thank Mr. Reddick for, uh, for his service as administrator and, and, uh, want to wish him the best of luck as he goes back into the classroom. And he's really done a, us a big favor in terms of, uh, filling a, uh, position that probably would have been virtually impossible to fill otherwise, so, uh, uh, thank you, Mr. Reddick.
Thanks, Jerry.
I guess since everybody took the rest of my thunder, I'll look for one more motion.
Motion to turn.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, am I saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose, Gil?